Today is April 17, 2018. It's approximately 7:03 PM. The thought for the day is, "The two most important days in your life are the day you were born and the day you will find out why." By Mark 20. I want to go ahead and official scholarship to order tonight. Our featured church tonight is, uh, Praise Temple Church. Uh, Pastor Dexter Mitchell. Sir, if you would have come at this time. If you don't mind, tell us a little bit about yourself and a little bit about your ministry. Take two or three minutes to do that and pray for our community.
As you have foreknown, the senior pastor of Praise Temple, non-anonymated church, located right here in Covington, Georgia, with six years gone. And we believe that that place has given a big impact on them that are brokenhearted, them that are hurting, them that are looking for answers. And we are... Our mission is to restore hope to the hopeless. Give the feeling as they have no hope. Because I believe that God has called all men to be fruitful and to live a productive life. Sometimes people need somebody to reach out to them and be of help to them, to help them. To build that confidence. That's our mission to be so hope to the hopeless. Our vision is to see all men as made whole and let them listen, let them laugh, and let them break the lies. Yes, as I pray for you, I pray that y'all will continue to pray for us and we will do that that God has called in our daily for good. Amen? That's all about it. They help me Father Lord God, we thank you and pray for this night, Lord God. Father, you are the Lord of lords and the King of kings. Father, you said, "Without you, we can do nothing, but through you, all things is possible." And Father, I ask right now in the mighty name of Jesus, that you will let a spirit of unity and peace be upon this county, Lord God. Bless these governing bodies, Lord God, bless them with knowledge, wisdom, and understanding, Lord. But most of all, Lord, let their hearts flow in love. Let love overflow their hearts, Lord God, that they will do that which you have called, that which you have ordained, Lord God, in the mighty name of Jesus. Let their... let their wisdom, Father Lord, lead in God, Lord God. If they seek to do that, which you have called in our daily to do, Father Lord God, in Jesus' name, we pray that you will continue to bless this county, bless the people of this county, Lord God. And we seek you in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for what you're doing in our community. Thank you for all that the church doing in our community. Thank you. My next one, I would generally have the pledge of allegiance. We're going to ask our commissioner Henderson, if he would be us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, commissioner, we had an opportunity to, um, look at the agenda tonight. Well, let me add, let me add this. We got a Covington CID. A letter of support to receive a grant. We want to make that item number, uh, TNG on the contingent. Supporting them going, and he has, he has a copy of it in front of him. But commissioner, commissioner, we have an opportunity to look at the agenda tonight. I seek a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve of the addition of the CID grant.
It's been motion by commissioner Sam and second by commissioner Schultz. All in favor? The pass is five to zero, thank you. Next on the agenda is tonight is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens, citizens to come up and take three minutes to speak about agenda topics only. Uh, at this time, you may come up at this time, please come to the left side of the podium. State your name and your address for the record, please. Agenda items only, you may come at this time. Thank you. Next we have is the chairman's report. I want to first take an opportunity to thank, uh, all who came out and supported the, uh, Newton County Family Fund. They, uh, it was a great success. We have a great turnout, uh, and trying to bring, uh, unity in our community. Uh, we're making every effort that we can to, uh, become One Newton, operate as One Newton, and be One Newton. Uh, and so we want to thank, I think we have some pictures up there. Yeah, we had, it was a, it was a great turnout, something kids came out and they enjoyed themselves along with their families. Uh, we had different, uh, activities for them to do and pet into and, uh, gave out food. And, you know, it was just glad to see people coming together, having, having fun. People that come from different walks of life, uh, being in one area and, uh, just enjoying themselves. We had a great turnout, uh, and I'm glad to say that. Uh, it didn't cost any other tax, taxpayer of anybody to do it, all donations. And so we, we, we're so excited for that. So we just want to, uh, say thank you to the community for coming out and supporting this event and again, One Newton. Uh, thank you. Also, uh, I want to give commissioner, um, Cowan an opportunity to give us an update tonight on the JDA, um, Cav, Cowan, Quinette Cowan, and Newton Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, there was a meeting held last week, it's properly noticed in our newspaper was there. Uh, but it's a, a, uh, review of the current bonds that are out for the, uh, the Cav, Quinette, Newton Joint Development Authority as it pertains to the colleges here. Uh, those bonds were issued, um, several, I guess a couple of years back, but at a variable interest rate. The request was to move that to a fixed interest rate. And there is a bond, uh, hearing to be held in Newton's Superior Court, um, for that. Um, in discussing some of that, I wanted to get some more information about that. But the, the authority was created back in 2004. And it was designed to help fund, uh, George Glandre College and Quinette Technical College. When the, and their pledge to the, uh, payback of the bonds was the student activity fees of those universities. And, um, out of that, there's been, I think, I was told, there are 11 facilities built, one of which is in Newton County. Uh, and it's now, started out as George Glandre College, is now Georgia State University. And the question comes up sometimes, well, who pays the bonds back? The, the facilities are leased to the Board of Regents, um, the Board of Regents pays the vote some days. And, um, if I guess any of the concern that there's some sort of default or something, it would probably be if the state of Georgia decided to not create or have a Board of Regents, which I think is very unlikely. Uh, but that's how that's structured. It is for the local universities here, um, the bond referendum is an opinion court action or bond here in Superior Court. So we keep everybody appraised for that.
Thank you, sir. Uh, one more thing, we're going to do right quick in the chairman's report. Uh, Mr. Chair, you want to say something about your, uh, swastika white poll board?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we've had some discussions about the T-SLOSS when we did that, um, representation here today from, uh, our bond counsel as well as from Gerard Davis and from our bond underwriter to talk about the T-SLOSS process and to explain some of the financial, um, ramifications and, and the financial side of that. So what I would like, if possible, uh, Mr. Chairman, is that we could get, um, a consensus from the board on, on moving ahead. As you all know, can see from the calendar, um, we need, if we are to indeed try to have this on the November ballot, uh, we do need to begin moving ahead. So the next step would be to notice the cities and to have a meeting with them. And I'd like to be able to try to schedule that if that's the board's decision or so. If we could have a consensus somewhere, then I'll do that.
Thank you, sir. This is not a vote, it's just a call, uh, to, to, uh, meet with the cities. Commissioner Edwards, are you in favor of that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since I wasn't allowed to attend the work session, I, I'd be more comfortable with not having an opinion at this time.
Uh, Commissioner Sam?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Schultz?
I think that at this point, moving forward with the discussion with the cities is, is important.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson? Uh, moving forward, see, Commissioner Cowan?
Yes, let's go ahead and move forward.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Uh, next we have the, uh, the county, the county manager before. Mr. Kirkwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, what I'm going to do at this time is we have, um, you'll see on your, on your agenda tonight is a resolution, a warning, um, Blazing Game. Uh, the attorney asking for a warning on Blazing Game versus Gerard and Ashland PC and Athens Firm uh, for representation, to represent us in the opioid, um, not, uh, class action lawsuit. And so, um, one of the attorneys from that firm is here and I've asked him if he can come up at this time to, um, to make a presentation a little bit about the firm. Uh, Megan and I heard when we interviewed the firm's, uh, foundation.
Good evening, how are you doing? My name is Leah Atkinson. I'm a partner of Wesley and Merk's Row and actually, uh, we're a firm in Athens, Georgia. We are a 24 attorney firm with a hundred support staff. And we specialize in litigation against state corporations such as the defendants in the opioid litigation. Um, I'm going to take a step back. Currently, the litigation is consolidated into what is called a multi-district litigation. And basically what that means is that lawsuits filed in basically around the country is consolidated. And a single federal judge resides everything and handles the discovery as well as where it pulls in bellwether trials. There's the trials that, uh, basically help parties flesh out how the overall litigation might work out and drive the parties to, uh, a negotiation table or if that doesn't happen, and individual suits get back to states and are tried individually. Uh, my firm has been specializing in multi-district litigation for 13 years now. We actually, um, started one of the biggest multi-district litigation lawsuits in the country. Um, had about, I think about 100,000 individual plans were consolidated. And that was the public match litigation up in, uh, West Virginia. Uh, now, not only did we start that, but we, we also, we let, um, my partner Gerard and other partners were part of the executive committee, the steering committee, and were responsible for actually trying to develop other cases. We, in the course of that litigation, made contacts with other national counsel who do multi-district litigation. Uh, we were, at the end of the day, able to get our clients' cases resolved, uh, more quickly than anybody else. And we got settlements that exceeded those that other national firms were able to get. So we are very experienced in this kind of litigation. So that's a big picture with MGLs. Uh, with opioid litigation, currently, states are filing suits, counties are filing suits, hospitals are filing suits, and some cities are filing suits. Uh, we currently are representing around 26 counties in Georgia. Plus some cities and hospitals are signing up more and more every day. Um, and the ultimate goal with that is the more that we represent, the better deal we can strike for our individual clients. So this is a matter of strength in numbers. Um, some counties have elected to file suits in state courts in Georgia. We think that's the best strategic decision towards the law is not very favorable. Uh, but the law that we're going to be dealing with up in the federal court in Ohio, I believe will be favorable. And the judge has said that he wants these cases resolved. So we think that in the day, a deal will be struck, there will be money that we can get for Georgia's counties. So, uh, it's going to take some time, but we think it's going to, you know, it's going to be a favorable resolution in the end. So, uh, about opioid litigation in general, when my partners decided that we were going to do this, I personally was proud. Uh, it's affected people I know, folks in high school, in college, and I think affects all walks of life. It's a strain on resources in terms of emergency rooms, drug ports, uh, police departments. Uh, it's a problem that every county, every city is dealing with and I think people are dealing with on an individual level. We are not going to be sending individual doctors or hospitals. I actually, before moving to Athens, I grew up in Atlanta, went to law school in Georgia, went back to Atlanta, worked for a firm called Carlak Open and Stair. Then this firm, I represent the Newton Medical Center here for years. I've known Jim Weeder. Uh, I've got a good relationship with Jim, I think he still likes him, I last seen my checks, he does. So, um, the focus of the litigation will be on behalf of the counties against the pharmaceutical companies, the manufacturers of drugs, and make billions, if not trillions of dollars on these drugs. They have mass producing, they have marketed them, they have, uh, mischaracterized them. In order to make profits, it's the cities and counties that are paying the price in terms of strain on resources. So, uh, that's what we're doing. I've got some data on Newton County. Uh, the prescription rate back in 2016, that's the most recent prescription rate that we have, shows there were about 81 prescriptions written for every 100, uh, people in Newton County. Back in 2014 or '12, I think it was about 100 prescriptions for 100 people. So that's a slight decline. Uh, we have not yet received the rates for 2017 that are coming, but, uh, there is a, a, you know, large amount of opioid prescriptions written into Newton County. Uh, I do not know what sort of string it has put on Newton County particularly. I cannot know that unless you hire us and we meet with your, your, uh, your resource people, your shares, uh, others, and then talk about it. Uh, I do know that we can do something about it, though, if it is a problem that y'all want to deal with, and we can get some money to help y'all solve it. So, uh, with that, are there any specific questions you have to make that will help y'all make a decision?
Of course, Mr. Commissioner. Commissioner Schultz?
Mr. Chairman, um, thank you for being here tonight. Um, I, in looking at the agreement, there's a 30% fee for your services if you come back, if you recover the money for us. And one of my questions is, is, um, in terms of the collecting the data, how much participation from the county, how much workload from the county is required in collecting that data?
Well, we will need to be with whoever y'all designate to, to meet with us and figure out where that data is. Um, in terms of, for example, a shared department, if there's some data there that we can see how many, how much money is budgeted for here in Narcan. Um, you know, that's, that's one cost. Um, we need to be with somebody to talk about, uh, the drug ports, what kind of problem, the drug ports are having with the publication. I, I can't say right now how much time we need until I know how big the problem is. I will say that we, like I said, have a staff of over 100 people. Uh, we are figuring out how to collect the data and do it in an efficient manner. And we will do it in a way that is the, uh, least intrusive way of pro, possible. Uh, it will take some time to figure out where that data is kept with Newton County. Uh, but we will work to bear the brunt of, of the time.
And what is the set of limitations on how far back we will go to, to determine the impact?
Well, we're actually, the, the litigation area is focusing on the, the ongoing nuisance. So it's not so much about the past. The past helps predict the future, but we're really looking going forward on, on what the strain is. Um, technically, it's, 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 in a way, it's a sort of hybrid case, but, you know, we could go back about five years, give or take. But I think as far as Newton County, as far back as Newton County has had the problem, uh, if we gather that information again, just to, to show what's happened and predict what's hap, going to happen, then that would help us.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I know that the, uh, goal of this is collecting damages, but are the only goals there, is it like removal of a dangerous product? Or is it, do you get warnings issued, or what's the, what's the ultimate, uh, conclusion of this, what you say?
Public education as well as to force the manufacturers to reduce the overall sale and production of drugs, which one company already has agreed to take its product off its top milk market and turn it down. Uh, and, and in terms of something beyond just monetary damages, the goal is to help counties such as Newton County put up infrastructure to help deal with people who are addicted and, and going forward, reduce the impact and, and help people deal with the problem and get off drugs.
You know, one of, thank you, sir, for being here tonight. And don't, thank you. Um, next on the agenda is, uh, item of eight, old business, uh, actually eight, eight, administrative service approval of strategic plan proposal. Mr. Kirkwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we're actually bored to approve the, um, this proposal for phase two of our strategic plan, which will be the, um, actual planning phase and the implementation phase, um, of that. Um, so, um, we would ask that this be approved, not exceed 100,000 off.
Thank you, sir. Motion of approval, please.
Well, I want to go through that statement by, I mean, I'm, so.
It's been motion by Commissioner Sam, the second by Commissioner, uh, Cowan. Uh, in a discussion. All in favor? The pass is five to zero, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is item number nine, um, finance.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is a request to approve a budget amendment, um, to, uh, take money from our, from the contingency to the general fund, uh, to fund this project. I'm asking for a table of that, I shouldn't have questioned.
Seek a motion of approval, please.
So, sir.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner, um, Cowan. In a, in a discussion. Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, uh, thank you, sir. Just for information purposes only, um, we, we, we take my, the, for the, uh, for the contingency to speed on.
Yes, we are taking, uh, what we're asking is that we be able to transfer, uh, that money for the strategic plan project on contingency due to that.
Do you, uh, I do.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Uh, Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, and, and how much does that leave the contingency?
I believe that will leave two six, two eighty, I'm sorry.
322,000. That leaves, I don't know. Yes. 323,000? 322,000. Okay, and my question, uh, for the public to understand why we have to have this budget amendment now when a lot of this work is going to take place in the next fiscal year? Why we need to have all of this upfront?
The reason we need to do this is because the law requires that if we enter into a contract, that we have the money readily available to pay for, um, that particular service, whatever it is that we're contracting for. So that's why we're asking for this budget amendment, so that we will have the money in the general fund in order to do that.
So I just want to make a statement here because I'm usually the one that is so, um, gets, gets a lot of heartburn when we take out the contingency. And I did yesterday when I learned that this was going to come out of the contingency. Um, but I also participated in the initial meeting of the Strategic Planning Committee. And it is a lot of intensive work and will be a lot of intensive work for the next, until probably January of 2019. But this work is really designed to take what the public wants to see their county move forward and is a result of the stakeholder assessment, the needs assessment. And this planning is going to help us and the county as a whole move together as one unit so that we are achieving the goals that the public wants us to achieve. And so I think that we're going to see a very different, uh, way in which we work, a very different way in which we budget our resources. So, um, at this time, I'm certainly in support of this and, uh, glad to know that we have at least 322,000 left in contingency to get us through to the end of this fiscal year.
Any more discussion? All in favor? The pass is five to zero, thank you. Thank the bosses for the work that they're doing with this strategic plan plan. Uh, next on the agenda is rezoning tonight. I'll put it here in this, uh, I'll be done with this.
Good evening, Chairman. My visitor aboard is Zach Montgomery, Director of Development Services. And what you have before you this evening is a request for rezoning for property that's currently zoned R2 and it's located in the Salem Tier 3 District, Overlay. Uh, the existing land use map shows it as a development node. And the proposed rezoning is to general commercial, CG. The comprehensive plan, the overlay district, uh, they both support this type of development, commercial development. And this property is located right in that area. And the case number is REC 18 dash 000001. It is located at 4283 Salem Road. And it's approximately 2.5 acres. Um, this case went before the planning commission and received the unanimous vote for approval. Uh, the applicant has requested some, um, relief from two items in the, uh, overlay district. And they also understand that that would require a special exception approval from the planning commission to get that moved forward. Uh, those two items were pedestrian connectivity with a sidewalk that goes basically, um, from the car wash to the front street. And this is a facility that will not have a lot of pedestrian traffic whatsoever. You don't really get out of your car to go through the car wash. And the other request for relief is the required bicycle rack, since not many people ride their bikes to a car wash. So those are items that should they desire to continue with that, they will have to go to the planning commission. There were a few conditions that were recommended by staff and approved by the planning commission that I will read in the record. To the others' agreement to abide by the following. To the site plan, leave a description received by the Development Services Department on January 31st, 2018. Said site plan is conceptual only and must meet or exceed the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And these conditions provide for the approval of a land district experiment. Unless otherwise noted herein, compliance of all conditions shall be in place prior to issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. Number two. Number two, provide satisfactory ingress and egress pursuant to section four sixty dash zero five zero G of the Salem overlay for the site to be approved by county engineer and/or G D as applicable, including but not limited to: One, all aspects will have to meet the development regulations. Two, a traffic generation analysis will have to be performed based on I T D guidelines to determine the need for auxiliary lanes. And B, compliance of the Salem overlay, including but not limited to section four sixty dash zero five zero. And C, receive approval from the planning commission for any special exceptions to the overlay district requirements as needed as listed herein before site plan approvals. With that, I will take any questions from the board. Any questions, Commissioner?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. At this time, we want to open it up for our public, for our public here tonight. We want to open it up, we allow ten minutes for those that speak, but have been, and those that speak in favor of this. If you would come at this time, we allow ten minutes to do so. Those that want to speak in favor of this. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. And, and yes, I'm sorry, who do you represent?
My name is Robert Sly, fifteen hundred Timothy Road in Athens, Georgia, and I'm discussing what we have to happen tonight. I work for a local land plan with a, from, with a conceptual drawing for this proposed car wash. Basically, the staff have whatever, everything that, you know, is involved with this. But if I have any questions, if anyone has.
No questions, sir. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone else? Thank you. We're off, that portion of our public gear is closed. We also allow, allow ten minutes for those that want to speak opposed to this. You also have ten minutes to come at this time, those that want to speak opposed to this. Please come up and state your name and your address for the record, please. You may come at this time. Those that speak opposed to this, you may come at this time. Thank you. Mr. Montgomery, what's the recommendation?
Sir, the recommendation is approval, and it's a unanimous recommendation from the planning commission for approval as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Shil.
Uh, question, Mr. Montgomery. I know in years past when we've had things in the Salem corridor that the buildings kind of matched each other, like Walmart kind of matched the publics, et cetera. What has been done with this particular project to make sure that that has been adhered and we have kind of a uniform look in that overlay?
Well, a conceptual plan only, because they're not for the site. No real elevations have been prepared to show any penetrations or architectural features that would, that we could hold them to. What they have indicated is that they're more than willing to go above and beyond the expectations and the requirements of the overlay to comply with the codes. They want it to look nice as well.
Seek a motion. Uh, Commissioner Shil?
I need to understand, are we including in this approval tonight? Or our vote tonight that we are in agreement that they would be relieved from the, the requirements for a sidewalk and bicycle ramp? Or is that something that would come back before us?
Absolutely not. Tonight is just for the rezoning, and that would come back before you.
Okay, so that's, that's not something that we, is included in this, do we see that anywhere in the recommendations?
No, just for the rezoning.
Uh, Mr. Kirk, I think it actually goes, excuse me, Zach, but it would go to the planning commission, I believe, for. You actually don't have to see that, there's special exceptions. Either they ask for a special exception, that's a special plan.
I'm sorry, this is the planning commission, uh, board of this. Any more questions for Mr. Montgomery? Thank you, sir. I'm also going to wave a pitch to close out that public gear. Commissioner Shil?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know myself and Commissioner Shil have definitely worked hard on the Allen overlay, the Salem overlay, to make sure that those areas look a certain way and make sure that everybody adheres to that, that overlay standard. With my question to Mr. Montgomery, it seems to me, even though the planning commission approved, it just seems to me that we don't have a finished, a more defined look of a rendering of what that's going to look like, according to your answer. And with that being said, I would probably make, I would make a motion to table this until the fifteenth of May to a lot of applicant times to bring back a more defined rendering of that particular building to make sure that it adheres to the Salem overlay. It's nothing, it's nothing against the applicant, but my, my history here has, has told me that when you ask someone to do it and you, they say they're going to do it, but it's not officially in a, in a document, it may or may not get done. I'm not saying that's the case here, but I would rather have that detailed drawing to make sure that we're getting what we think we're getting. So with that, like the motion to table REC one eighty dash zero 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 one to May fifteenth to allow the applicant the opportunity to bring back to the board a more detailed plan of the proposed structures and site plans shown in the Salem overlay.
Second.
We got a motion to table, the second. I mean, I got a motion to table by Commissioner Sam, the second, to table by Commissioner Shil. Discussion, Mr. Montgomery, has any thoughts?
Um, I'd just like to respond. Typically, an applicant, before they spend tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars in the architectural, whatever the cost would be, in the architectural design of the project, they want to know if they're going to be approved to do it before they do it. And, you know, the staff is required to adhere to the codes and ordinances laid out by the board of commissioners. You know, I, they don't typically bring a completed site, uh...
I'm not asking for a completed architect, I need, we need more details. I'm sorry, I've sat here too long and seen one thing being proposed, and we get something completely different, and it was because we didn't do our due diligence sitting up here and it's horseshit. We took somebody's word, but it wasn't on paper. We, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna prove something without a little bit more detail. I'm not saying we did a full-blown hundred-page set of plans, but we need more than what we have in this document tonight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Cowan, one second. Guys, we, we gave you the opportunity to come up during public gears, so I, I can't allow you to come up now, so.
We supply elevations through the planning staff, and I'm a one in one part of the presentation.
Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Sam, you might be helping with this, but my understanding, we're talking about zoning situation. That's a, what is the proper use for that particular piece of land? The architectural standards is a separate process, I believe, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
And I understand Commissioner Sam's is concerned about, making sure everything looks right. But I, I think they're clearly two separate processes. Now, again, the question is, is this the best for us? Is this the, a, the best use of his land for that? It appears that, based on what the planning commission is recommending, it appears to be a suitable use for this property. Now, when we get into the architectural standards and the standards of Salem overlay, that's a separate decision to be made by the planning commission, is that, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so we, we pop, I mean, no disrespect. I'm just, I'm just asking this from like, from the way I study land use law, it's separate. We approve the underlying use of property. The overlay and the planning commission apply the overlay standards to that, and they, they make a recommendation back to us based on what the overlays, they're supposed to be implementing the architectural standard and bring it back to us further down the road. As Mr. Montgomery explained, you're going to have a lot of expense in design work. You may not know that the property is going to be zoned properly.
But I, I understand that, and, you know, what I'm saying.
And I, I agree, I probably in the past, I'll probably be...
Well, you know, I'm only going on eight years single here. I go on my four years single, uh, the zoning. I go on my two years sitting on plenty. Normally, I see more than what I have here before to take a look at. I can, I can count cases where the applicant has said X, and we got Y. I'm only asking for, looking for detail. I'm not asking for a full-blown set of plans, that's not the intent.
And if I can add to that, Mr. Chairman, the other plans that were included have nothing to do with the zoning. So that's not the case that was being heard this evening. And they weren't included for that reason, so that they wouldn't muddy up the waters or confuse anyone.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Shil?
I, I think inherent in the Salem overlay are the design standards. And so if you are cha, if we are changing the zoning to be compliant with the Salem overlay, they have to be consistent with the design standards. And for us to be able to make a decision on the design standards, we need to see more evidence of what this project, of what this building is going to look like. Because it, you can't do one without the other. I understand the zoning law, but part of having this Salem overlay is to have an enhanced set of standards in this building.
Thank you. I got a table on the floor, you got time for this, sir? I got a table on the floor, uh, in a more discussion. All in favor? One second, I tell you, I start off, and I start with the interviews. Look at the, the two sides, and, but you don't from the planning board, same, yeah, as you have this information. Uh, it's table, uh, four one, uh, one extension. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, the Synergia, item number ten. Commissioner Shil, I could look at the Synergia tonight, I think a motion for approval, please. Uh, Sam?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we proceed with the motion, I just want to confirm, do you have a binder with your agenda packet? You also have some loose documents that represents new supplemental materials. And with respect to item ten E, I'd just like to clarify that the, in fact, the document that's under consideration, Synergia, is the loose item and not the one that is in your binder.
Also, also, we got some appointments tonight, I'm sorry, I moved a little too fast. Item T and B is a Gakers steering committee. Uh, if anyone here tonight has been appointed on Gakers, please. Commissioners, you have an opportunity to look at the Synergia, seek a motion of approval, please. There's been motion to approve by Commissioner Edwards, and second by Commissioner Sims. In a discussion, uh, Mr. Shil?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, Sam, the item that is loose, what are the subsequent differences between that and the item that's in our packet?
Um, there's only one, it's in section two, uh, the, basically the last couple of sentences on the first paragraph of section two. This agreement has to do with using court staff to carry out the mission of the juvenile court by assisting a affiliated nonprofit. In the first original version of this, we had prohibited court staff from having anything to do with fundraising assistance for the nonprofit. We have revised that to allow any general activity. We've removed that specific restriction. However, we've included some provisions that say that all activity must be ethical and consistent with the Georgia Code of Judicial Conduct.
So in the original document, it prohibited them from soliciting funds. And now we're allowing them to solicit funds. Is that, is that not violated the gratuitous clause?
That's a great question. Normally, it would, however, because the, the, the court, the court's mission is, involves providing services to youth and indigenous persons. A, what would otherwise be a gratuitity when provided to an authorized service is not a gratuitity anymore. For example, the county cannot simply hand out winter jackets to people on the street, that would be a gratuitity. But the court has a specific authorization to assist the indigenous juveniles, and it could take steps to provide those items of clothing as part of an authorized service. Uh, the fundraising aspect gets into a greater area, but because the juvenile court's mission is broad and because the funds would be restricted to services that directly further the mission of the court, we believe it could be included as long as you weren't independently violating the gratuitious clause by, for example, buying meals for someone who the host that they will donate to.
Just want to make sure that it's, that we're consistent among all entities that if we prohibit certain employees from fundraising, that we're, and now we're allowing other employees to fundraise. That there's, that seems to be a little bit inconsistent.
It has to do with the special mission of the court. Is there, is there a specific other class of employees who we are not allowing to fundraise that we compare it to?
I, I just, I, I think that it, it opens up some, it opens up a Pandora's box, I would think. That's just, I, I just think that by, by allowing that rate, that, that opportunity, then who's to say that for any type of other department that you can't do fundraising on the job?
Uh, well, if, if you were fundraising for the county, I suppose you could, if you weren't, you know, if you weren't violating the gratuitious clause.
It's like a pretty regular, isn't it?
Well, Commissioner Henderson, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just, I change another question. You said that Gakers, they take a steering committee, and what is the objective? Just a little bit, you know, kind of, I'm seeing a steering committee, thank you. I'm asking, I'm making sense?
Sorry, committee is a committee that's been put together to work with myself, Commissioner Edwards, Commissioner Cowan, uh, and, um, Ms. Lisa, to pretty much give the record to, for, for Gakers. There's an activity that's going to be going on down at Gakers.
And so, I guess, I guess I'm asking, have we, so is it part of the reenactment, the Gakers' reputation, or? And so we, I guess, I guess I'm asking, have we, uh, so, as a part of the reenactment, a Gators presentation, or? I mean, I'm asking because it's a little serious. And, and you all know what, what we're working with. I still say, I don't believe that New County, being the only, uh, county in the state of Georgia, that I have a plantation. And I just don't think we should be in a plantation. I think we've been blessed with a, a lot of resources, a lot of favor from the government, et cetera. You know, and a lot of major companies coming. And I just didn't, I just don't believe it's something good that we should have in any county.
Uh, Commissioner Cowan.
We're not, uh, the current discussion on this memorandum.
Wait, this, no, uh, you could ask a question. I mean, we're talking about the consent agenda. Um, Commissioner Shulz, ask a question about what? What item number, consent agenda, we have a question about what?
Okay, my, my question on the memorandum, about the due report is, Sam, you're okay legally with what's in here? Is it too gray for you?
Um, it, it is, uh, not ideal. I am, I am comfortable with it. It, it is the product of some intense discussions with the juvenile court judge. And, um, this was my best attempt to keep us legal, but it does come close.
Cool.
I, I, I would not have consented, I put this on here if I was uncomfortable, but it's, um.
Okay, I see.
Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This will clarify on the, uh, Gators steering committee. That committee was assembled to make, uh, officially assembled to make, or is being assembled to make recommendations to this board. And this board, as a majority, will have the ultimate say-so in any decision that that committee puts forward. So whatever decision that committee makes, this board will have the option to say, yeah or no. Um, that, that's the purpose of that committee, just to get more of a, uh, a community feel with that.
Commissioner Shulz.
Thank you. I wanna go back to the memorandum because that gave me some heartburn, wasn't it? Uh, is it defensible, the way it's written?
Yes, and I would specifically direct you to the fifth line of section two, which says, um, you may not use public funds on any expenditure that would amount to an unconstitutional gratuitity. So if the court spends funds that are gratuitity, um, that is not permitted by the, by the, the language of this agreement. Um, I do think there are circumstances in which some fundraising assistance could be provided without bringing gratuitity, but it does expressly prohibit gratuitities.
Well, I, I guess my concern is that in many of our other departments and other, um, uh, agents, uh, entities, we have friends of Gators, we have friends of the parks, and those are the fundraising arms. And those are not necessarily employees that are raising the funds. And so it just seems to me that there needs to be some type of, if you're gonna raise funds, that should be done through a nonprofit entity, that there's a, a clear line that differentiates if someone is on the, is serving in an employee capacity and raising funds. That, that just seems to me that, that violates what they have in place for all of these other entities that we have.
As a, as a policy matter, everything you said makes perfect sense. Um, but I do think, given how the juvenile court has sort of a special mandate and how this, um, nonprofit is basically just carrying out that mandate, I think it would be legal.
Guys, the consent agenda is designed for things to, uh, that we can consent to. So don't move tonight, don't remove item, we use chairman's privilege tonight to remove item number E until we can get some better clarification on it. Um, until our next board meeting. Um, so if you would, it's correct, through item number E. And I, and I need, um, I thank Commissioner, uh, Sims, not Commissioner Edwards, to make his motion, please. Make his motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, make sure I understand this. My motion is to approve the consent agenda with the chairman's privilege of removing item ten E.
Thank you, sorry.
Sorry.
In, in, in the discussion, all in favor? All vote, all votes. It passes four one. Next on agenda is, uh, finance. Ms. Cross.
Presented tonight by the March Financials, I have provided this slide show for the audience of the summary pages. First is the general fund, and we'll focus at the bottom of that summary page, um, for the general fund in total. We are currently at eighty-six percent on revenues and sixty-six percent on expenditures. So we are through the third quarter, um, in the final three months of the year. Um, and we are trending on target. Um, a little under both revenue expenditures, but we do plan to end the year, um, positive. I'll remind you when we talked about contingencies earlier. If you remember when we planned the budget, we had three separate contingencies. Our cash reserve contingency, our flood balance contingency, and our fiscal year change contingency. All of our contingencies, cash reserve, the flood balance are intact. We have not had to touch those. The only ones we have, um, used for the fiscal year change is contingency. And that was the purpose of setting that up, so that we would have those funds available should changes happen. I wanted to make sure I put that out to you. There is a slide here, and it's in the middle of your summary page, about local option sales tax. Um, there's a three-year comparison, and we are seeing a trend upward, um, which is good. We'll skip over in your booklets. The next pages, seven through... Ten are your detail pages, um, for you to review. We'll skip to page eleven, which is another, another summary page, right? And these are our enterprise funds, the brief funds. Water funds, solid waste fund, and Gators and factory shovels. Um, all of our, the water fund is at seventy-three percent of revenue and fifty percent on expenses. The solid waste fund is at fifty percent of revenue and fifty-eight percent on expenses. And Gators and factory shovels fund is at seventy-eight percent of revenue and eighty-nine percent of expenses. Um, solid waste, there is a work session on Thursday to look at that fund, um, in more detail. Um, but collections for the hang tags for the end of March around eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand. And that was about five thousand seven hundred and ten hang tags sold. The next few slides are regarding your squaws in your booklets. You can skip over to page twenty-one. The first is the two thousand five squaw. As we discussed in previous meetings, um, the two thousand five squaw is wrapping up. We're finishing at the last of the transportation projects. Um, and our anticipation is that that will end in the next few months. We do have the excess collections, which go to the administrative building debt. Um, and those amounts to two point five million. Next is your two thousand eleven squaw. Um, most of those projects, um, because we waited to the end of collection, have begun. Um, the most, um, recent was the emergency room expansion, um, and you recently approved the N R U with P V M, um, regarding that expansion project. Um, that is well underway. Next is your two thousand seventeen squaw. The first slide is the summary of collections to date. We have collected about seven point seven million so far. Um, the only project, we haven't obviously started any projects. We are using the debt service available to pay down debt, um, as required. The next slide, Brian, is the collections. It kind of just analyzes our, what we budgeted for collections was seven point seven million. Um, or I'm sorry, projections were seven point two million. We've actually collected seven point seven. So we're trending about five hundred thousand so far over what we predicted. Next is your impact fee fund. Um, as you will see, um, if you look at the impact fee fund balance, um, those balances, um, on most of the projects are beginning to become positive. The library, because of the larger expense of the library that was bonded, um, is still negative. Um, having said that, we've discussed recently setting up a work session to begin talking about the future of impact fees, um, and how we foresee that in the future. So that should be coming up soon. Last is the debt service summary, and there are any changes to the debt service summary, um, for this right now. Are there any questions?
Did all the cities get their two thousand eleven squaw? The cities, the different cities, did they get their two thousand eleven, two thousand eleven fund?
Yes, the eleven squaws are set. As soon as they receive the money from the state, we immediately pay it to the cities. So I receive that money and immediately allocate it out. The cities are responsible for maintaining their squaw collections.
I'm sorry, any questions? Commissioner Shulz.
I don't have a question, but you have done a wonderful job presenting this to us every month. And I, I think we're all very appreciative, like, simplified for us, and it's just a breath of fresh air.
Thank you, thank you. I've been trying to find a way as to present these in an easier format to you and us. So as always, I appreciate your suggestions.
Any one else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on agenda is item number twelve. Discussion consideration of nine one one fee litigation, Mr. Kirk.
Uh, Sam? I'm Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, um, in the past couple of days, we have been, were working with Barnes Law Group to come up with a, um, a contract for you to approve. Uh, unfortunately, we haven't gotten the final approval from the Barnes Law Group. Um, I actually, um, have not been privy to, uh, the specifics of the nine one one fee litigation. Um, so, um, if you would like someone, um, from the Barnes Law Group to come and discuss that, uh, the substance of that litigation with you, I suggest potentially tabling it. If you are comfortable proceeding, uh, with the litigation, um, then, uh, we can simply have you approve that and approve a contract subject to county attorney approval. Um, so it really depends on whether you think you have enough information about the litigation to, for, with, in principle, hiring the Barnes Law Group to represent you.
Guys, if y'all wanna move forward, it's lovely to come towards, uh, Commissioner Shulz.
Well, um, former Governor Barnes did come before us, so we've heard from the Barnes Law Group, but I, I really don't wanna approve something until we see it. And so I, I would say let's move forward with it, but, um, if you could bring it back to us for a final approval. So I guess that's a motion.
I'm making a form of a motion.
Yeah, yeah, I would say a motion. Okay. Motion to approve retention of the Barnes Law Group for nine one one fee litigation, um, subject to captain's attorney approval of the fee arrangement and retainer agreement and subsequent, uh, board commissioners' review and approval of that agreement.
Second.
This is a motion by Commissioner Shulz, and second by Commissioner Sims, any discussion? All in favor? It passes five zero, thank you. Next on agenda is item number thirteen, discussion consideration of revocation. R zero four one seven one eight. Um, Mr. Kirk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is, uh, a request for the board to approve engagement blazing game, Burks, Gerard, and Ashley P C, uh, to represent us in the opioid class action lawsuit. And the recommendation would be to approve this first motion.
Thank you, sir. Um, Commissioner Shulz.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of resolution R zero four one seven one eight.
This is a motion by Commissioner Shulz and second by Commissioner Sims, any discussion? All in favor? It passes five zero, thank you. Next is item number fourteen. Uh, request an approval of additional parcel of land. Uh, resolutions, R zero four one seven one eight eight, Mr. Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, when this, uh, when the previous resolution was approved to allow Mr. Bates and, um, Mr. Campbell to track codes, the, um, resolution had been revised during that revision. The identifying partial tax parcel number for tax parcel, uh, oh, four, six, three, nine, zero, zero, zero was inadvertently left out of that revision. So this is requesting, this is a new resolution including that tax parcel number. Um, and so we're simply asking that you approve this resolution, which clearly identifies, more clearly identifies the property that Mr. Campbell and Mr. Bates would have.
Thank you, sir. Seek a motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's to approve as stated by the gentleman?
Second, this is a motion by Commissioner, uh, Edwards, and second by Commissioner Cowan, any discussion? All in favor? It passes five zero, thank you. Next on agenda is item number sixteen, which is citizen coming. A proportion of all agenda will read, a lot of citizens come up to speak on any topic. If you will, please, at this time, come, you have about three minutes. Uh, speak on any topic, if you would, come at this time, please. Please state your name and your address on the record, please. You may come at this time.
Good afternoon, my name is Archie Shepherd, nine one six nine, good to have you come and join us. I've come here to make the commission of the well, the senior service over at, at Turner Lake. Uh, I decided to join Turner Lake after some of the things went on here. And some of the things that I observed there is that, uh, Ms., uh, uh, the executive director, Ms. Reed, and her assistants, uh, Lucy and Lily. And during that time, these ladies have to come out in the kitchen, help prepare food. They have to help wash dishes and all of other things. My thing is, if someone come down looking for the director, the center, and they out there washing dishes or something, and somebody come back to the board and make a complaint or whatnot. So my thing is, 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 is that a set number of employees supposed to be there? Do they understand or what? For them to have to come out? I use an example of, uh, chair pro chairman. If you are supposed to be in your office and the janitor don't come in, if you have to come out and sort of buff and clothes, and this is what I'm getting at, do they have a, do they have a job description of anything for them to work by? Uh, they just supposed to be doing this? That is something that I wish the board would look at here before. Something comes up where they say that these people are not doing their job, and then you have a problem. So if the board would look into this, see if they understand. If they understand, try to get some employees there, what these people can do, what they are supposed to do. And maybe give them the job description of what it's supposed to be. Cause I don't think this would be washing dishes, serving food, and that nature. That's not, I, uh, to vote, that's not a presentation.
Thank you, sir, you're welcome, thank you.
I must work there, say, if it's free to drive. You know, back when they raised the, when we had our tax deal, you told me that you raised taxes to build up contingency.
you told me that you raised taxes to build up contingency fund. And at that time, you know, that, uh, that shows we had six hundred thousand dollars in contingency fund. Since then, you've spent three hundred thousand dollars. And nothing has been an emergency. You haven't had an emergency, uh, since then. And I thought I did contingency fund, and you said it, that contingency fund is for an emergency. Where's our raised emergency been? I haven't seen that, I haven't seen that. But still, we've spent some three hundred thousand dollars in contingency. Everything, everything that comes up, comes out of contingency fund. And Nancy used to honor that, but she honored that, yes, but it ain't been a good...
As long as I say. Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Uh, my name is Olish Brown, and I'd like to talk about what court has been ordered. Um, this is brief, um, Commissioner Schultz, this is my district. I wanted to talk to you all about, um, code enforcement and hiring at least two more code enforcement people. Um, we had two, Campbell and Carlos, and, uh, we are aware that, I believe, on Silver, it's one of them left, and we only have one now. So if you all would please consider, we need at least two to three more people in code enforcement, um, to clean Newton County, Hudson, and the whole, the whole Maden Arts. We cannot operate with just one person. So please consider, uh, thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? You want once, anyone else? Or twice? Commissioners, Commissioner, uh, Coward?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm still struggling with that language issue there. So, um, um, when maybe it's back, I'd like to get something from her, because I, I, I think we're miss... We're making a mistake on that, but that's just something I see my ear right now. But, uh, I will say, comment wise, I did enjoy Family Fun Day Saturday. I appreciate Mr. Chairman and you sponsoring that appointment. I think it was a great effort for, um, Newton County, it showed that there's a lot of, uh, community support out there. And, uh, it was good to see a lot of, a lot of people out there enjoying themselves.
Commissioner Edwards. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just want to thank the, um, um, my constituents and issue four who have, uh, came by the house, and, and I've had so many requests for Sire and Cell, which I don't have about a hundred on your side. But, um, it's still not quite time to put them out yet. But I, I, I would just like, just want to thank, thank them for their support and their continued support. And I thought, um, a lot of people who have really just want to, just walk with you, and really to walk with you. I said, hey, not the right time. But, um, and lastly, just want to thank Chairman for the fun day, you know, man. He had fun. It was so late, she was dancing so hard there, and we kept to dance and going on before I knew it. Time just looked by, and the music was just, just really, I mean, it just really jamming out there. And we had a great time, Mr. Chairman. Uh, hey, man, that's, that's great job. Hope we have one of you. Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for coordinating the Family Fun Day. It was a lot of fun. I want to know who was in charge of the weather, because it was beautiful. And, um, I also would like to thank the citizens who come out to these meetings, um, and also who are our eyes and ears in the community. I, I just, you know, for example, Ms. Brown, who just came up as a, uh, one of my constituents, and she is, um, diligent in making sure that she, uh, takes on the responsibility of helping clean our roads. And, uh, there are a lot of other citizens that do a, a lot of public service, and they go, they're unsung heroes, and I appreciate what they do.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, Commissioner Sims. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to echo, uh, Commissioner Schultz and Ms. Brown's sentiments on code enforcement. Probably fifty percent of calls I get have to do with code enforcement, and all of those were addressed. And I think they're all addressed by follows. So if the other commissioners are doing that as well, I can only imagine his, his workload and his, his work drivers. Secondly, um, I, I think, I know I've had a conversation with a couple, um, of the other commissioners. We, we've reached a point where, and I, I've given Zach a heads up as well, we've reached a point where we need to build some, a sense of urgency around our building standards in terms of, uh, our residential destruction. Uh, we, we want to make sure that we're ready for the next boom. In fact, the next boom has started. So we want to ensure that we're consistent with what, what supports our county in terms of tax revenue. And I don't have the exact figures now, but, uh, a, a, a typical home in Newton County, I just read that a typical, typical home in Newton County with two kids who are already in the red in school system. So, so, and, and I know that, I know that does not equate to necessarily equate to square footage. It has to do with the construction these days, especially with the millennials coming on and buying a home. So I, I think that discussion has to take place sooner rather than later. And we've got to build a sense of, this board's got to build a sense of urgency around that particular issue. Uh, and lastly, uh, it has to do with, um, with our community and what, Mr. Chairman, you and your, your team put on Saturday was a, was a great event. I, I thoroughly enjoyed it. I felt the community enjoyed it. I thought it was a great exhibition of communities coming together as, as one community. And I personally want to ensure our, our municipalities throughout the county that, that I feel like this board is committed to that oneness and moving forward together and solving problems together. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, quick, uh, quickly, I want, I want to give a second, uh. Guys, we, we, we know we, code enforcement is a, is a big thing that's in Newton County that we, uh, and desperately need, uh, to make sure we keep our eyes on so many different things that's happening now with trash bins throwing everywhere. Uh, public safety, uh, fire, police, that's also a big thing, so, uh, it's, you know, it's a pleasure season, so, you know, it's that time that we need these people that would have to go, go out and try to give, uh, some back away. But, so we want to make sure we, you know, that our county members know that, hey, we support you and your efforts, uh, in trying to make this happen. But we definitely do need, uh, more code enforcement, uh, public safety, uh, it's a, it's a big need for our community too. But, uh, I do, I want to take the opportunity now to just say thank you to, again, everybody that came out and everybody that participated and, and helped out with this event. It was a great event, uh, we had every city represented in our community, Cordeville, uh, Newland, uh, Mansfield, City of Covington, uh, Oxford, and we also had so many circulate, so. It was, it was, it was a blessing to see, uh, every law and, and every law enforcement agency that we have in the community with that. Uh, it was, it was just good seeing the community coming together and, and actually fellowship together and everybody just enjoying each other. It's the spirit we want to do. That's the spirit that we want to try to keep pushing forward in our community. Mr. Kirk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to answer, uh, Commissioner Edwards, and, and in regards to the building, uh, standards. We are scheduling a, a, a work session for the next meeting to discuss that very topic, so. We, we had a written schedule, well, the last week, and then we had to push it back because of some other things in this one. It's a pressing thing today, but it is, um, we will have that in the next.
Thank you, sir. If nothing else, I seek a mo, I seek a motion to adjourn. This is a motion by Commissioner Sims, and second by Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Schultz at the same time. All in favor? Thank you. Have a good night, guys.